I'd like to call the Conway Grammar School Committee meeting to order. This evening, we're here at the Whately Elementary School. We are trying out sharing two meetings, so Whately School Committee has just finished, and now Conway is up. And so I'd like to start our meeting by introductions with myself, Jan Warner as the chair. And we have member Phil Cantor, Elaine Campbell, our superintendent Marty Barrett, business manager Patty Kavanaugh, principal Dr. Judith Fisellano, member-
Carmen.
Lee Anderson, I did that last time, and another member, Ira Band. And tonight, we have with us Bob Lesko, the director of Facilities. So he's going to report to us briefly on any capital needs we have upcoming. So I guess we can move on to our first order of business, which is to review and approve the minutes of December 17th, 2015. And so I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
A move to accept the minutes.
Second, second, and any discussion? I have one small matter. It's probably the same one you have. Patty Kavanaugh did not present the financial report.
Yes, yes.
It was our superintendent.
Oh, that's right.
And actually, we made that correction internally.
Okay.
It did not get to you, though, so.
Good catch. Okay, so one other thing I just wanted to bring up is when we talked about the school committee meetings, about combining them, we were going to do this month as a trial. And so just kind of trying to figure out where we're going from here. If we're going to continue on, it sounds like we're going to do-
Only if Marty would stay as superintendent, would we continue. But forget it. He's not going to stay. It's a ploy.
Well, I think we really wanted to do it next month, and I don't know that we've talked beyond that.
Okay, and March, I think we have to go separate because of budget issues.
Public hearings, yeah.
Any two trial would be a home and home affair, anyway, so this is a good-
Yeah, so I think we're off to a pretty good start. That seemed to be a pretty smooth transition from one to the next. And one other comment I had on the meetings was there was a discussion about the school calendar for next year, and I would like to see a little more elaboration in the minutes about what we discussed. I'm sure there are some questions there by parents and staff if they see that. You know, we discussed either before Labor Day or after Labor Day and what weighs out. I don't know if you want to draft an edit or if you want me to draft an edit. I thought a little more detail would be helpful.
For the minutes, okay. It was just to give you a heads up, so that when we got to it in the April meeting, that you would have a little bit more information for your purposes. However, I will say that after, as we continue to go through this snowless winter, it may be a moot point, because if we end-
You just jinxed us right there.
I know, I know. If, if, you know, we end earlier than later, then construction on the Deerfield Elementary roof could happen sooner, and we would do our normal kind of start time that we've done for the last six, seven years. So it was just, in worst-case scenario, if we had to wait until the 20th or something of June to start.
So do you think you could add a brief synopsis-
Sure, I can, I can make those changes, yeah.
It would be great. Any other further discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
I am.
Okay. All right. So next on to our financials.
I'm going to let Bob go first.
Financial first, or-
You're going to do the financial, and then Bob.
Okay, so you have December in front of you. All the salaries have been encumbered, and right now, we have $291,840.95 available. There are some negatives, but again, we're looking at budget buckets in total, and right there, in that spot, we're good. So we're still trying to learn our new budget and put things where they belong. You do have seven warrants to sign tonight totaling $70,262.83. And I am hoping that next month, we will have other funds added to these monthly reports, such as the school choice, how we're spending the school choice money, and the circuit breaker money, so that you'll have a more complete picture of all the funds. If you hadn't moved it up so close, you would have had it this month.
Any questions on the financial statements, or you need a few minutes? Okay, let's move on, then. We have no public for public comment this evening, and so now we'll-
Well, we ditched him in Conway.
They're sitting there waiting.
I'm sure. Like they do every month.
Like they do every month.
In the gym.
In the gym.
Okay. All right, Phil would like to go back to the budget for a minute.
Just about the, are we, are we realizing any savings from heating oil due to the-
It's hard to tell, because we've only, I think, paid for one delivery so far, because we had some oil in the, in the tank. So we, year-to-date, we've only spent about $9,600.
Because I saw, I saw the way the bill was presented, it was difficult to tell what the price was.
Well, that's because we had some leftover. We didn't utilize everything we needed to utilize last year, so they have to sell us that first, and then we get our discounted price for this year.
That must be with those first two lines, isn't it?
Yeah, so the two prices here are 226 and 319.
No.
Oh, you're looking at the bill.
The bill.
Oh, can I see that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so the 319 must be what was left over, the number of gallons we had left over from FY '15 that we had to use up before they gave us the new price at 226. The new price is 226, and then that was, the number I had in my head was before taxes and everything, so the 226 is correct. So it is two, it's one delivery, but two different prices, because we had to utilize everything that we-
Contracted for the year before.
For the prior year, yes.
Okay, so the answer is yes, we are realizing savings from the decrease.
Now we are.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thanks. You're welcome.
All righty, Bob Lesko is here to talk to us about any needs we might have for capital for our school. And actually, before you start, I just wanted to give you a figure, and that is, right now, in our grammar school stabilization, we have $181,407. Last year, we voted 50,000 in, and this year, we're going to discuss how much we're going to ask for again. So, just some background info.
Again, you know, things are going good in the school, but it, it's going to, there are going to be some big things coming up with the boilers and the heating system, and I think putting money in a stabilization account for some of that sort of stuff's a really good idea. So I'm really hoping that happens again. I don't have any really big ones this year. I've got some things, again, that Patty asked me to look at, and, you know, there's a little bit of painting, I think, that Judy Wannet done in the fourth, in the fourth grade OTPT, and I think that's about $2,000 worth of work. There's a section of carpeting in the wings program.
We're going back and forth on that.
Pardon me?
We're going back and forth on that.
Yeah, I just kind of, what I did, I looked at the classroom, I ran a square footage, and we're talking about a $3,500 or so worth of flooring, just so we've got a number and an idea and an order of magnitude.
I'm sorry, Bob, you said about 2,000 for painting?
Um, 3,500.
No, for painting with the $1,000 alone.
Oh, the painting, 2,000, so, yeah. Someone, you know, similar to the others, we had a long discussion about Whately and toilet partitions, and there are some small issues with the partitions, long-term, that we're going to have to start thinking about, I think, in Conway. I just very quickly tried to put a number together, just so somebody could get, and I, I don't think there's anything that needs to be done this year, but I think we ought to be thinking about the fact that that's going to become an issue in Conway, like it is in a lot of the other schools. And if, I think the installed cost to do all of the partitions in the entire school would be about $12,500. Again, I don't see that as something that's very, very pressing right now, but I think it's a good number to have and be talking about.
For '17, do you think, Bob, or '18?
Well, any year that we were given money, we can start plugging away at them. So, you know, we could do some in '17, we could probably survive till '18. But, you know, being planful and putting money aside and getting it done.
Could I, could I stop you with my first stupid question of the evening?
Yep.
What exactly is a partition, in what you're talking about?
The metal partitions in the bathrooms.
Between the stones.
In a lot of our schools, we've just had a problem. You know, they're, they're getting to the point where the hardware's failing, and they're, they're wobbly, and they're falling down, and they're expensive, and it's just something to think about. Good question. Another one that, that I kind of would like to throw in there, and that, that's almost all, everything. One thing, I covered for Bruce last winter, when we had all that snow, and he was out some, and there were some issues with cold in that bottom basement. That overhead roll-up door that goes in the back basement, I really think that the school would be really smart and well-served to replace that, and probably not put in a roll-up door, a metal roll-up door, like in there would be to put a double partition door. So normally, someone going in and out of there with access could use the one live panel, and then if we needed to move big stuff into the basement, we could open them both up. But they'd be a well-insulated door that would save heat and would save us from freezing. You know, there, there were some stuff that froze during the, that, we came very close to having a major problem with the domestic hot water heater in, in the building.
Do you have a price for that, Bob, to replace those?
I'm guessing it would cost us, to do a real good job of replacing it, it would cost us about $1,600.
$1,600?
We should definitely do that.
Well, that's just-
And what's the cost of a hot water heater if that goes?
Probably eight or $10,000. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it would be money very well spent.
It's cold down there.
It is, yeah, and, you know, if, if you go down there in the winter, there's insulation piled against the door and all kinds of stuff, and that gets accessed a lot during snow removal, because it's where all the equipment is stored. So it, it's not a huge expenditure for something that I think would really serve the school.
I'm wondering if, if that's something we could do this year.
I think we should move ahead. We've got $8,500 left, and it would probably reduce our feeding bill a lot more.
Probably.
We'd probably save it, what we expend in the $1,600, we'd save in oil.
And I just, just from a historical point of view, does, do you know what this, that, that door that we're talking about replacing, we didn't just buy that a couple of years ago by any chance, or do you mean that's just, that's a nerve, okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, it's, it's a cheap metal roll-up door, and it's been there since day one, I'm guessing. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend replacing it in kind, but it's, it's very hard to get a metal roll-up door that fits tight, and it's, it's, it's not the right application, in my mind.
Sounds like it belongs in the south.
Is that then, it's something you could get a fixed price on, fixed cost?
I can, I can predict, you know, I'll try to, I've got somebody that's been doing a lot of those kinds of projects for me, and I'll get them to take a look at it.
If you could, and then we could bring it to school committee next month.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Say that again?
If Bob could get us some hard costs, and then we could bring it to the school committee.
Well, because within your budget, and you can just pick it up without our approval.
Okay.
If you still need it, definitely bring it back.
Well, do you want to have a cap? I mean, $1,600 sounds so low. I just thought it would be, not higher than that.
Well, I'm hoping, you know, maybe I'm being optimistic, but that was the first project tonight that I was told. It was low.
I know, that's true.
Well, if it's less than $2,000, can we go ahead and fix it without coming back?
Yeah, and if you need capital for it, then come back. So I don't know, just going to toss this out there, like, what do you think about using some stabilization money for, like, toilet partitions, or, you know, any other bigger job? Or should we continue to save and ask for extra for that kind of stuff?
I think we should continue to save.
Both.
Both.
They're not mutually exclusive, are they?
We could do-
No, they're not, so, but it kind of shows good faith that we're using the money that we're asking for stabilization to stabilize.
Agreed.
Doesn't it, but didn't we present that we're saving for a boiler?
Yes.
We're past that point.
We can still continue to save for that and spend a small amount for some necessities in between.
I thought a boiler was like $300,000.
Well, it is, but we're still saving, so if we ask for 50,000 this year and spent 12,500 of that, you know, from our stabilization account to repair the bathrooms.
When we look at the budget, we may want to keep that in consideration.
Okay, so, just, just, yeah, throw it out there on the table for more food for thought. How about that?
And, you know-
Nothing we have to vote on, or, tonight.
Well, we do have to get our capital request into the town.
Right.
What is that due to?
Probably passed. He knows we're always late, because our meetings are late.
Right, the final warrant isn't until March, so.
One of the things that I think as we talk about the partitions and stuff, that I really would like to put a plug in for, that I don't think is something that's going to be resolved here tonight, in fact, I know it isn't, but it's something that is a district-wide issue, and that is doing a good job of project. You know, I think what's happened here at Whately is such an example, is if we have some good people on staff in the district, we can do really good work and get a really good value for our money. And one of the things that I've been pitching with Patty is, is to try to get a few people district-wide that can do some of these, you know, the fellow that we have working here, if we had someone like him working within the district that we could send to the schools, it would just make it so much easier to get projects done, and to get them done at a level of real quality. It's really, really difficult to get somebody to come in and do an installation like a toilet partition. It's a tough one to do. It very quickly approaches the kind of money where you have to bid things, and that introduces a whole another. So it, it's something I'm expecting to become a discussion within the district more and more, is to maybe get a fellow who's got some carpentry skills, if we can move throughout the district. Or another grounds person that can help us with mowing and picking up leaves and all around the district. I think those are just real smart things, that we'd get a real value for our money by doing it.
That's probably very true.
That's my self-serving pitch for the night.
No, it is absolutely true, and-
Is that doable given our construction?
What do you mean our construction?
Because-
The four towns, the shared budget, whatever, that's, that's like shared-
Something that Marty and I have been talking to the four-town administrators about.
Shared services, that's the buzzword these days amongst our town government.
What we've been talking about with the town administrators is three areas: maintenance, technology, and human resources are the three areas that we've had conversations.
Because they're in the same situation. They have to outsource for everything, too, and we're all paying too much. The problem is, every year, the budgets are tight, and every year, nobody has a little bit of extra money to throw into a pot to do this. You could hire a district person, like Bob, he is a district person.
Right.
And you could get somebody like Bob is talking about, who would go in and do all of these small, it's like your home, it's very hard to get somebody to come in and do small jobs in your home. It's got to be, you know, a $20,000 project before you can get people to show up.
Well, this makes sense if you can demonstrate, I mean, we should be able to show with receipts and just mathematics that some, that this can, here's the things you won't have to put on your budget, if we can-
I would highly recommend it for your budget development for next year. I mean, I know it's a year away, but it really, and I think starting with maintenance and then going to technology makes a lot of sense. Human resources would be, you know, another one, because we have, we don't have a human resources department. We have pieces of Patty, and pieces of Paula, and pieces of people, but-
And the towns are hurting for it, too. So these are the things that we've talked about, not just sharing amongst the schools, but sharing amongst the towns as well. Especially the technology and the maintenance, because you all have town halls that need repairs, you all have technology in your, in your offices, in the town offices, that would also need support. So we, and then the thing that's been holding us up a little bit is the, we've had a little bit of rollover with our town administrators.
Just a tad.
Yeah, well, we're having another one in Deerfield, so.
So I think Conway's got the most seniority into-
Casey, isn't it?
Casey's on.
Went to Ashfield.
So she went to Ashfield.
So Tom has the most seniority.
An island of stability.
And he's been here, what, two years?
Two years, yeah. So that has also proven a little problematic, but I think it's a really good idea. I think it would be good to try to go to.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you made it, Bob.
Yeah, me too. I feel much better than I did the last meeting.
So Bob, before you run out, one little question. So we talked about boilers before. Can you remind us, like, what our cycle on that is, like, the expected replacement time?
Well, you know what happens with a boiler, like the one that you have in, in Conway, is they tend to chug along, you get two. They tend to chug along forever, but it gets to be older technology, and you're really wasting money because you're not as efficient. Do I think those boilers are probably going to fail in the next two or three years? Probably not. But every year, we're giving up a whole bunch of efficiency that we could get if we, if we did replace them.
So would our goal be to replace one of them in, say, three to five years?
I think that'd be a real good goal, yeah. That, that would be just about, I, maybe two to five years, try to get one in. And, and that's, you know, if we were to, the boilers in Conway are, they're sized such that either one of the two boilers can handle the load. There's one that's a backup. Pretty much, they don't do that anymore. What they do now is they put in several smaller modular boilers, so you maybe got an, if you've got, like, where we've got two big boilers, either one of which could, could handle a load, if they were going to do, if we were going to do a job like that now, I would be, I would suspect we put in maybe four much smaller boilers that might be capable of handling one and a half times the load. So if you lost one, it was only a small percentage, and they can bring those on incrementally, and they become very efficient. So if we were going to do a project in there, we probably, I would recommend, we'd replace one of those bigger boilers with two smaller ones, and do that.
But if this was something that we wanted to put to MSBA for funding under their repair project, we would probably do both of them at the same time and not just one.
Yep.
Both of the existing ones.
Yes. So we, the next window we would have, we'd need to decide whether you wanted us to look at that by June, if you want us to make next year's window.
I thought our roof made us ineligible for a number of years.
When did you have your roof done?
Just last year, or two years ago.
Before I came in.
Claire was in first grade.
2011, maybe?
Oh, the, I was thinking the repairs that you had done.
We just did the final repairs of the 2011 primary.
Would you do it under the new rules or the old rules?
Claire was in first grade when we did the roof.
I'm not really sure.
But I thought we were going to, what year is she in now?
Seven.
Seven. I thought we were going to go to Frontier for the next MSBA project.
Frontier's not going to be a repair project, that's going to be, that's going to be a major renovation project.
And, but also, I, I think it needs to be a part of a bigger discussion, because if, if somebody suggested boilers, to me, I think I can, I would push for Sunderland quicker than Conway.
Well, I have a question for you. If you do the MSBA route, can you do, because then you get the percentage from the MSBA, can you do the town contribution via stabilization fund?
Sure, you guys can fund it with whatever you want.
But you still, but you do have to bond for the entire project. And then you just pay off the bond with your stabilization fund.
So, but I guess we're kind of just looking for a goal, like, how much do we need to have, by when?
Well, that's what I'm saying, and then do we want to save it all, or are we going to use this to, and do an MSBA project, you know? Are we going to do a boiler and maybe window replacement when, project with them? Because there's all different levels, you know? The next major one would be Frontier, and I think that wouldn't be in the repairs, that's going to be a major reno. So once we finish the Deerfield roof, we can, we can put in for another repair project, but then we have to decide, is it, is Sunderland's more priority than, than Conway? So then if we do Sunderland next, you would be the next one, and that would still make his two to five years.
I don't have a simple answer.
Yeah.
It's a tough one, because it really becomes-
Sorry.
Pitting one town against the other.
So say we did it five years, what, you know, ballpark me what we need to, to that project in five years.
I mean, if you're looking for, you know, and I don't know, he's probably went to, spends huge amount of time putting these numbers together, but I think we figured, you know, half the boiler job was going to be about $150,000.
Say that again?
Doing one of the two boilers was going to be about $150,000.
So maybe that's where I got my three.
Yeah. And so we're, we're pretty well on track with that, with our savings, so in five years, we're going to be in really good shape.
Right. Well, but when we go to do the boilers, we may want to do new windows at that point, too, so that we can get the ultimate efficiency, get better windows and doors, do a door, window, and-
Stay pays half.
Right, and roll those three into an energy savings project.
How old are the windows?
They've got to be original.
Original, yeah.
I don't see any, any reason why you would put a new boiler in a building with 20-year-old doors and windows. It's like throwing money literally right out that window.
Well, yeah, and Patty's right, not only is the efficiency of not having the new doors and windows, but, but also, if you're gonna, the real way they save energy, you get super efficient boilers nowadays, is they size them very precisely. And if you can save up and do a project, or you can do a bigger project and tighten the envelope, at the same time you're doing the boilers, they're going to put smaller, even more efficient boilers in. If you did a boiler right now, they would size it larger for the load of, so it, it is worth waiting some. I, I think putting the money aside is very prudent, because if we had a disaster and one of them failed, we could deal with it. But on the other hand, there, there's some wisdom in waiting until you've got enough money to really look at the project and do it right.
Sounds good.
And we're also saving towards our, is it digital control?
Yeah, the control system, that's, that's a, and, and that's probably-
Isn't that a half a million dollar job?
I think-
I thought that was pretty big.
We had that at about a, about $150,000 was the number that I-
I don't remember if you missed.
Maybe it was all together.
Yeah. So just trying to give the, you know, you guys the history of where we've-
It's more like $100, $120,000. Now, one of the things, and I'm not sure exactly, where the numbers really got big is when we started talking about the, doing the univentilators. Each classroom has a univentilator in it, and, you know, if we were going to do that, and that, that's not one that's going to come next year or the year after, but it will eventually. That was about a $315,000 project.
What is that?
The wall units, even worth it.
Oh.
You know, the ones that make so much noise at Frontier.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've also had a number in there, you know, at, at some point in time, you know, the, the emergency generator in that building has been around a long time, and it's got some issues, and eventually, that's going to have to be replaced. And the last time I ran the number on that, that was about $135,000.
But that's not a school item, that's a, because that's the town designated-
Could be.
We enjoy a privilege there that this school does not, just in listening to them.
Right, they do not have a generator here in this building.
Right, and, and that, that generator was specifically covered in their, in the EMS department's budget, wasn't it?
In yours?
Yeah, in the-
When we repaired it, they gave us some money towards it.
That was at least part, I think it was shared, isn't it?
I think it was shared.
Yeah. And interestingly, I think the energy management system project probably would return more, would have a better payback initially than the boiler. You know, that, the controls in, in that- You know, that, the controls in, in that building are old, and they've been around a long time, and the new technology is, is very efficient. You know, to me, doing the energy management system at a minimum should happen at the same time as the boiler, but might even be a project you'd consider doing before the boiler.
And you put windows in there too, and it's not really a big deal.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Still, we're being proactive about it, which is a good thing.
Yeah, we are, yeah. I mean, even if we had to, at some point, take out a small loan, we still have a pretty down payment.
Right.
We're really the only elementary school with a stabilization fund?
I don't know, are we?
The only school in the.
That's pretty good.
It's amazing.
Frontier's, Frontier's regional, regional agreement does not provide the opportunity to have one.
Patty thinks Sunderland may have one, but we haven't put any money in it.
As of late.
As of late, yeah. I'm not aware of any other than this.
Yeah, and we just started it, I was like, three years ago, maybe, four?
I think it's four, because you had some money when I came, and this would be my fourth.
We've done fifty, twenty, and then fifty again, and so that brings us up to.
One twenty.
Yeah. And so now fifty, and this year we can request.
Well, let's assume for the sake of argument, the town free cash amount is one sixty. How would that request be received? Is that, would we be better off making a smaller request?
Well, let's wrap it all into a budget talk and not take it singly.
Yeah, let's do our budget first, and then we'll, then maybe talk about that stabilization strategy some more, see what we're at with that. So go, go ahead, Patty, take it away.
I'll let Marty start if she wants to say anything. Well, just, the only thing that I've been telling every committee is, I look at this as a first draft, first draft budget and squats situation, because there are a lot of moving parts. We're in the middle of negotiating full contracts. We don't know exactly what the final figure will be on that. We did, initially, we weren't sure if we were going to know what our health insurance increase would be. And even though the town is covering it, it's an additional cost of about six point eight percent being passed on to the town. And each of the towns has to pick up that increase for the central office personnel that you pay out of your, your budgets. So this is the one town that we are hoping that you will support the technology increase. And I say the one town, because Scott Paul put together a district technology plan. Your building is up to speed with technology, you're dead on, and we'd like to maintain that. The other budgets, we weren't able to put it in because of the increase. So, you know, I think Scott's done a phenomenal job of getting people up to speed and getting new equipment, and making sure that people understand what they have and how to use it, and I really don't want to lose that. It's taken him, this is his third year, and he's taken this time to do that, so. So anyway, Patty will go over the details with you, but I do want to stress that this could change before we meet again.
At any minute. Okay, so, looking at this, for our collective bargaining agreements, even though we don't have a negotiated rate, we do know our steps are going to cost us about twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. We have some degree changes that will also add three thousand three forty-nine. We have some new longevities that will add five hundred dollars to our budget. We are going to be changing our per dam rate for subs from sixty-five to seventy-five, so that'll increase our budget by eighteen hundred dollars. We have increases.
That's a wonderful increase, actually.
It really should be more, but this is all we can afford right now.
That is just.
We are the lowest in the valley.
Even with this raise.
We're approaching what's fair and equitable for the nineteen nineties.
I know, it is, it has not moved in, I think, ten, eleven years.
Other schools need to do that, especially Frontier.
Well, it is, it's, it's across the district, yeah.
Okay, so then, as Marty said, there, we have one line, and that is for the increase in the insurances, retirement benefits, and other adjustments being, we put in a marker here for, you know, for some type of settlement with unions, and that adds thirty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars to the budget. Some of that is one-time money, because the retirement benefits that we'll be paying out is only one time, so that money comes back to us. Central office expenses.
Could you just break the, because that's a big number.
I can't break it down, so.
The retire, the retirement amount?
No.
It's what we had talked about in our earlier meeting this afternoon, Phil.
Okay.
Over at Deerfield.
That's a big number.
That health insurance increase.
No, I mean, what I can tell you is, is when we go into collective bargaining, we have to bargain in good faith. But for budget development, we also have to think about the highs and the lows of that. So we have to put in different amounts, not knowing what the final contract will be. So, and this has always been, you know, the case, because I don't know what, what it's going to end up, up being, and that's for all four contracts, so.
So this is putting in a marker for that?
Mm-hmm.
And you, you're basically conservative in your outlook and your marketing?
We'll see what the contract negotiations.
Are you a middle of the rotor, or are you a conservator, or are you a liberaler?
We will see where the contract negotiation process takes us.
So what we do is, Marty, not being able to tell me what's happening in negotiations, we come up with a, we have a discussion, and we come up with a, you know, what we think is a good amount now. Where that will be, where, I don't even know if that's high, low, middle with her, because that would not be bargaining in good faith. So I take my knowledge of what recently has been settled and her knowledge, and we come up with a figure.
Gotcha.
So Mike, so this happens once every three years?
Yes.
Got it.
So it makes budget development once every three years tricky.
I understand.
That's why I'm saying, this is, this is a moving target. I don't believe by the time we meet again in February that we will probably have a settled contract. So it may be not until March, at our March meeting, that we have more firm figures.
And if we don't, we still have to have, vote a budget and have a public hearing?
Well, I'm hopeful, I'm, I'm hopeful.
But I'm just saying, it doesn't stall the process, we move on with estimates. Okay, so we do have some increases in our central office expense, and basically, it's because last year we didn't have the computer, what do you call it, technology integration specialist, we didn't have that in our budget, so you're seeing it now. We lost the kindergarten grant, so our costs to the towns for our, our early childhood director is increased. And we also lost partial funding for some of our financial salaries that we were paying with another grant, with, under the new grant regulations is no longer allowed. So that totals eight thousand thirteen. That number is probably going, that number, I can tell you almost positively, will go down, because this is based on the old allocation method, and we are working on a new allocation method for the technology integration specialist. So I'm having a meeting with the technology director and with her, and we're going to be looking at her calendar, and we're going to come up with a more equitable.
Oh, good.
Change to her allocation. The building technology, twenty thousand dollars. As the superintendent said, our technology people have done a great job of taking inventory of what we have and getting us all up to wireless and everything else. And then what he is saying is, we need twenty thousand dollars every year to replace components, not just like desktops, but wiring and, and those connection things. And we need that much money every year to keep replacing things before they age out. So then in medical and health services, I met with our nurse leader, and she asked across the board that we increase the costs for our supplies, because of the EpiPen costs are going through the roof. And also, all schools have AED machines, and we never put money in the budgets to keep them, fresh batteries, we're required to change the batteries, and they run about four hundred dollars a year. So we've added five hundred and fifty-four dollars to cover those needs. Building security systems, every year in our maintenance, our building maintenance line, we take out the cost to have our alarms monitored and our fire.
Extinguishers.
Thank you, I can never think of that word. Fire extinguisher service, and so instead of continuing to try and take that out of our maintenance budget, we want to establish its own line, and it's about forty-three hundred and twenty dollars. We do have some decreases, we're going to decrease our legal expense by five hundred. Our special ed transportation, we're going to decrease by four thousand. And the, your actual percentage of the central office decreased from eleven point seven four down to ten point seven one, for a savings of eight thousand three seventy-one, which gives us a total of increase of ninety-one thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars, which is a five point three percent increase.
That, that last little bit, the, the decrease in central office percentage?
With that what?
The, the last, I'm sorry.
Eleven point seven four to ten.
How does that relate to the one in the top of the category above, the increase in central office expenses?
Because you're realizing savings, because your percentage went down, but there was also some add-ons to the budget to make it increase, so I wanted to separate the two things, so you could see the both of them.
What was the, the summary about the instructional services in the middle? I think I missed that.
Oh, sixty-three hundred dollars, I'm sorry, thank you, Carl, I skipped right over that. That is a change in, every year we've been budgeting for the, for the reading camp, but we've never budgeted for our sped services for kids who we don't want to regress over the summer. We continue speech, P T O T, that wasn't budgeted for, so we needed to add that piece. And then we're also changing the, the line items in between other instructional services and testing. So we've reduced our testing, but increased our instructional services. And those are costs for, we have children who have vision impairments, so we have a vision person that comes in and works with those students. And we also have a consultant for B C B A. We have a number of kids in the pre-K that are, that need to utilize that consultant.
I'm still having a, I don't understand how this number is this high.
The thirty-eight thousand?
Yeah.
Because you have contract, you have a negotiation.
It might not be.
Health insurance went up six point eight percent, so.
That's the big one.
Insurance, you have a.
That's separate, though.
You have a retirement.
No, it's not, that's in there.
Insurance, retirement.
You have a retirement.
Your assessment.
We don't know what the contract is going to settle for, and that's for both IAs and teachers.
As we get further along, I will break it out into details, but at this time, that's the best I can do.
Okay.
So I was wondering about the security systems, the increase in four thousand three twenty. You said that came out of building maintenance, but we don't see a decrease in building maintenance?
No, because we don't want to decrease our building maintenance. So we've been continuing doing building maintenance on the hopes that we will have savings in our heat. But if we're going to start reducing our heat number, we want to give line items what the line items are due.
Okay, so we're actually increasing.
Yes. But we are, but that's what we need to do, because we're spending.
But also being transparent about what we're actually spending on.
I mean, what I've been hearing from the towns is, you know, we just heard it again this evening, is pretty much level funding, the two point five percent, so I don't know.
Do we get credit for coming in at one point one less?
No, that never evens out in the long run.
Right.
We should.
But.
We asked for credit, we asked for advanced credit at the time.
We did. I thought we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then that year that we came in at thirteen or.
This was before anyone hears time.
Yes. So I was kind of just wildly thinking about something while I was listening to the Whately meeting. And, so it's always kind of been a, a thought of mine that why, you know, and I'm sure it is everyone else's, why the state doesn't take over more of the special education expenses to kind of balance it out, town by town, where small towns are hit so harshly, and I just heard Whately discuss it, they, you know, they had one student, they were going to be paying maybe twenty-four thousand dollars to out service. Is there anything we can do within our district to stabilize those costs? Like, could we have a, a joint special education budget where each town was assessed and?
You mean for the town to come up with a.
It's a wild thought, I know, it's a wild thought, I'm just throwing it out there.
It's hard, Jim, because you're a union, so there's no fiduciary response, nobody has fiduciary responsibility for, truly for a union. But I will say that the trend is for school districts to start a special education stabilization fund, where just like the building fund, they're asking the towns to say, we need to put this money away in case we may have a spike.
It makes sense. Either that or regionalization. Or the voter in favor of, but.
Right.
Or the voters could sort of remind the federal government that they promised a zillion years ago that seventy percent of your sped costs would be federally funded. They have never.
No, they've never done that, no.
But they promised to do it.
In other states, they, they do, do it much differently than Massachusetts. I believe it's New Jersey. Once a child's special education, that money there, that goes right, they're, they're paid from the state. It's off the school books and, and paid by the state. And they all have state schools. Like, we have chapter, what do they call them, chapter seventy-four placements, right, because chapter seventy-six is book. And so those schools are funded much differently than we are, because they put in for a request and tuition set. That's why out of district, the out of district tuitions for us keep going up, 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 because these schools keep getting increases in their tuition. We don't get increases to fund our schools, but they're getting, they're getting increases and our tuitions go up. In other states, they run those schools. The schools are state-run.
We, we deinstitutionalized, so we don't run them anymore. We privatize.
But in reality.
It seems like such a runaway train.
It is, and in reality, we have tried to do as much as we can within the district by creating all of the substantially separate programs that we have.
And Frontier does, I mean, the district does way better than many districts.
But we still bill each other a hefty price.
We do, and that's the, the, yes, the conundrum, I would say, because we are a union, so we're billing each other.
But the, but the difference between sending a kid from Deerfield to Wings.
It's still less expensive.
Is still less than if we had to send that kid out to, you know, a behavioral.
Tri-County.
Right, to Tri-County or Valley West or any of those others. So you're right, I mean, and, and, and most people want kids to stay in the district if they, to maintain them, to grow your own programs. I mean, that's, you know, that's the trend.
The problem is that you can get a move-in at any time.
Right, and in a small town like Whately or even Conway, one move-in can.
Well, there are laws that protect this, they have.
Conway had quadruplets move in one year. Do you remember that, ages ago?
I remember that.
Oh, my God, like, one family, four kids.
I mean, there are some laws to safeguard us against that, but, you know, it's only like.
That was a ride.
It's like a Band-Aid.
Yeah.
So you can then appropriate funds.
But there is, you know, where it goes, I don't know, but there is talk about this on the state level, because it is a shared concern.
And then that goes along hand in hand, Jim, with the conversation we were having with Whately. Deerfield and Sunderland are, and Conway to a, not to the same degree. We're popping with two point nine-year-olds coming in with more and more needs, and that's our responsibility, even though they're not a kindergarten.
With two point nine-year-olds?
Two point nine to twenty-two is our responsibility.
That's our age, for preschool.
Well, they come through reach. And we're getting a lot from that age.
Yes, we are.
And they're, and they're coming in needier and needier every year.
More services.
More services, and unfortunately, more money. I, I look at it as a bigger problem. I'm digressing, but my concern is, why is this happening? Why are we seeing skills that typically we saw in early toddlers now in, in three and four-year-olds? Why are the language skills so poorly developed? Why are the social skills so poorly developed? Why are we seeing such an influx so quickly? I mean, a lot of people have a lot of theories, and a lot of it has to do with mobile devices and screen time. I think that's one of the theories, you know, and the brain development is happening different. But to me, that's the bigger problem. But to me, that's the bigger problem. Yes, it is an immediate budgetary concern, but as a country, I'm very concerned about that.
Under-socialized human beings don't bode well for the future.
No, no. And, and so what's happening is then they get to kindergarten, and the kindergarten programs aren't able to do exactly what they have been in the past. And, you know, it can continue up the grades. It's, it's something to be very mindful of.
I mean, and you, if you look at what we're seeing up here is what's happened in the urban communities seven to ten years ago. And what, when, when you see these stories of these urban school districts whose children aren't on third grade reading levels, it's because they come in at kindergarten. Kindergarten becomes pre-K. First grade becomes kindergarten. Second grade becomes first grade. So when you get to your third grade MCAS, you're only at a second grade level because that's how many years of school you had. You're not at a third grade level. You haven't made up that year. And when will you? When will you ever make up that year? Because the kids are coming in with underdeveloped skills.
There's a population of kids with needs that it's very justified. They have to go to out placements. I'm curious how many times schools can make an argument, we really can program from them here. And how many times will that go as far as a hearing? And what is the decision-making involved in that, you know? Working for different districts, you know, I've seen districts really taking a good look at it. And other districts, it's not worth it. And sometimes that could be tens and tens and sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I think that's a real important thing to look at. How does a district do that? How does this Department of Special Education assess that? How does the resources in each building really make a sound decision? You know, you want to please families of kids, and some are very justified. But some, you know, the resources are there.
No, I agree with you. I agree.
You'll see districts that do that. They become penny wise and pound foolish because they think they can deal with kids in-house when they really don't have the capabilities to do that. But they don't have the money to send them out of district. Well, where's that going to, where's that going to end you? It's going to end you with a child that's not being serviced properly and.
If you don't have the resources of the programs, it should, you know, you have to accommodate. But if you do.
You're right. Every district is very different about their, about their protocols and the way they go about making a recommendation for that.
Right.
I mean, I don't think people really realize how much we do have in district.
Yep.
It's really a lot.
Yeah, more than a lot of other neighboring districts.
More than a lot of others, yeah. And not just, you know, advanced babysitting, good decent programming, you know?
Just sort of to, to add my true sense to this. One area that I think would be, would be wise for districts to look at is sped transportation costs. That if there are five kids on a van, each of those children is charged.
Full price?
That's right. Sometimes we watch vans leave and we sort of joke to each other, hmm, ninety thousand on that one.
Wow.
So that would be an interesting area for a district to look at in terms of, hmm. What is, what is that all about?
The providers permit that?
We pay for route. I don't know if she's talking about people coming in from other towns, but when we bid our sped routes, we bid them by route. So it's the same amount of money if I've got six kids on there or ten. So it's by the amount of time they need to get from point A to point B.
Not so for the Wings program. It's different than that.
We are talking about kids coming from outside the district.
Kids coming from outside the district. Still, that's a, that's a special education cost that taxpayers.
Big money in that transportation.
Is it outside the realm of, are you suggesting districts create their own transport?
Something to think about.
Yeah. I mean, it's out of the box, and I'd have a heart of it, but would it actually be?
No, a lot of school districts are, are creating their own special education. Though, though, they're still outsourcing big bus, but a lot of them are bringing special education vans in-house.
The law for school bus transportation forbids schools from forming their own regular bus companies if there's a regular bus company in the, look it up.
No, there's a lot, there are still some school districts in the Commonwealth that run their own buses, long, Islam metal being one of them.
Right, but that's, that's grandfathered, that's grandfathered in, that law that came out.
No, they have only been doing it for about six years now.
But they may not have a bus company.
They do. They belong to L P V E C, and they don't use their, they belong to a collaborative that you, that provides bus services and they don't use it.
No, I can point the thing out to you, but we, we would be prohibited by that law. I looked it up because I was really interested in doing that because the, the day camp on Roine Brook Road wanted to give away their school buses. And this was one of my first brilliant ideas five years ago. It was like, we can save money. Okay, I can get these buses, and we'll get a couple of drivers. And the town will set up their own bus company and forget this group go. And, but there was a law that actually precluded us from doing it.
I don't think there's a law that precludes it because other towns do it all the time. And it's something that their school districts ask them to look at repeatedly every time they have to award a bus contract. At what point is it more?
Especially the next one we have to award.
Right, is it more feasible for us to bring in a house?
Just the special education transportation, I'm sorry. Just the special, those are separate contracts.
Yes.
Right, we have two companies, Jonah Baker and Vanful, who do our special ed transportation, so.
Is that, do districts, do other districts scrutinize the budgets for their special education transportation?
Everybody does.
Right, and do districts do that, their special education transportation?
They don't have to. They, the special education is a, is an exception to the thirty-B, so you don't have to bid it, but it's.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's, but it's, it's worth you doing it because you will get more competitive bidding. So you get more competitive pricing. Since I've been here, I've bid it every year. This is actually the first year I didn't bid it because somebody made me an offer I couldn't refuse. So it was, it was just better for us to sign in and lock in our pricing, so. But yes, I mean, every school district is looking at every penny. And, and the focus is more on the pennies that aren't in the classroom because you're trying to get as much in there. So anything we can cut out of the ancillary services, very high focus. All school districts do that.
For a small school like Conway, it doesn't make sense to do a big capital outlay for a van and training a couple of drivers.
Well, it's much, it's much more regulated than that. You have, you know, there's all these fees that you have to pay to the registry, and everybody has to have specialized licenses, and you have to have inspections twice a year, and you've got maintenance of vehicles. I mean, it's much more complicated than let's get a bus and throw somebody on it to drive.
Right, right.
But if you even simplify it from that, we already have a van that's picking up five people for a program, and we're paying individual tuition or, you know, transportation fees for them. It should be a lower rate when there's more people on the van.
But ours don't change. I could put, so when I bid it, let's say there's four kids on the road.
You were talking about one route, and Dr. S was talking about another one. She talked about Wings that we're paying full, full transportation fees for each student, not a shared.
Kids coming up from other towns.
Not a shared transportation, so who?
Those towns do their own bidding for that transportation. So in other words, if we have a student coming from Hatfield.
They have to transport.
They have to transport their child.
So we send ours out, but we have to pay the full amount for those that we send out too, right? Is that what you're saying?
If we're sending them out.
I know we send some out to like Smith. We have at least one that we send out to Smith, right?
And then we have to do the transportation piece on top of that.
No, that's vocation. That's different.
Yeah, I know. It's a little different.
Yeah, but you're talking, but for an out of district.
No, so I run, so for the four towns, I put out a route for everybody that's coming from Sunderland or Deerfield going to Wings. And whether, right now there's four kids on that bus, I pay sixty dollars a day. Now, if Whately ends up throwing a kid in, I'm going to be able to pick up that fifth kid, and it's still going to cost me sixty dollars a day because there's room on that bus. The only time I have to pay more is if I have to add another vehicle. And if one of the Sunderland kids drops out, now there's only three kids on the bus, I'm still paying sixty dollars a day.
I still think, I don't want to prolong this. I still think it's worth looking, looking into.
But I see what Dr. Judy's saying, because if we get a kid from Mohawk and Pioneer, instead of them both hiring a bus, they should get together and share a bus.
Yes, but that doesn't change our budget. That's what I'm saying, right.
Uber for special ed.
Ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm a little nervous.
Special ed Uber, let's go.
I don't know how late the custodian stays in this building.
He comes in at three and stays fi-, five hours, so that would be eight o'clock.
Well, that's why I saw him turn off all the lights.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't have a key. Hopefully the door's locked behind you.
We're almost done here.
Patty, about, just, is this, is this budget, the page three of ten, is this correct?
Where, where you pointing to?
Yeah. The whole, the whole pa-, well, if this is talking about fiscal year seventeen change in budget and all of our salaries are scheduled to decrease?
In the superintendent line, yes. In the business finance line, yes. Because you, you, those went down. Remember I told you? We've got increases and we have decreases.
I guess I didn't remember that you told me that, or else I would not have.
Well, you asked me why I have it in two places, one's with an increase and one's with a decrease.
The eight-thousand-three-seventy-one.
Ah, I understand.
So when we're looking at the details, this looks different than what you've used to seeing it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And this is what I've been trying to get to, so that we can look at the end of the year report, we can look at our monthly report, and look at our budget, and they're all going to be in the same format. Now, this format differs from our monthly report in that, A, it has lines, and B, it's bigger. But actually, it's this report, right?
Okay. It makes sense to me, yeah.
And we don't have to keep it this way if you don't like it. You can change it to whatever you want. We have a lot of flexibility.
Take more time to look it over?
Yes. And, and please, if you have any questions, email me. And I say email me because if one person has a question, someone else might be having that same. So when, if I were to send me a question, I usually respond to everyone. I received a question about this. Here is the answer, so that everybody gets the same information.
Okay. You should ask questions outside this meeting pertaining to the budget.
You, but you send an email to me, and then I can send an email to everyone, but you can't respond to it because then that would be a violation of the open meaning law.
That's the clarification I need. Thank you. Okay.
But you can always ask questions.
Got it. Okay.
You could respond with another question.
But you can't discuss it.
But you can't discuss or, or offer any opinion or deliberation.
That's the magic, that's the magic words. That's the magic word.
Or you could, if you hit, just reply and not reply all.
Okay, so are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let's go. So on to reports, and I have just one thing to let you know that I've been continuing on with the meetings with the principal search. And we're moving right along. So last week, we met and reviewed all the responses for surveys that we sent out to parents and staff. We had a very productive meeting, pulling out some keywords out of all those responses and drafted a, an advertisement for the position. And so that advertisement is, has been posted on spring, spring, yep, on school spring. And it's going in the recorder, the Gazette, Brattleboro Reformer, Burlington Free Press, and, yeah, that's.
The Gazette, I think. Did you say the Gazette?
I said the Gazette. Yep.
Yeah, those four papers.
Yep. So we're going to give several weeks for applications to come in. And in the meantime, we have scheduled another family forum. So by the way, we had one scheduled for January fourth, which nobody responded to. Nobody came. So we thought maybe it's just a bad time. So we're going to offer another one on February tenth at five-thirty. We offer daycare and pizza. Hopefully get some family responses as to what they're looking for, what they feel is important for new principal. February tenth, five-thirty.
Yep.
Yep. And so then the next morning, we're going to review all of that information, review the applications, and hopefully pick some people to interview. So that should happen by February eleventh.
You've gotten some applications already, so.
Wow, wow.
That will, yeah.
So we are well on our way.
Is your committing, putting together draft questions that you're going to?
Yes, so that's, yep, that'll be one of our next meetings. So we want to hear from the families, and we're actually going to interview Dr. S to help us draft some questions.
Are you doing any interview training?
No, no.
So I've just had this experience that we all got trained on how to interview, and it's really very productive, and it really helps you actually do it in a uniform way so each candidate actually gets the same. Because often what happens is either you talk too much about whatever, and you don't really get to know the candidate, or it just can be really challenging.
We usually have Louise, who's very experienced, and she's kind of running the show. And we're all going to get together and draft the questions, but she'll actually be running the interviews. We'll be participating in some, but I don't imagine it'll be any runaway conversation.
Each candidate will have the same questions asked to them by the same person in the same way.
Okay.
And it's very, I don't want to say contrived, but it, it's very ordered.
Yes.
So that it does make it fair. I know Louise has done at least five principal searches in the district. And she's, she's quite good at it, so.
Yeah. She's even going to help us come up with a scoring rubric for the application so that we can effectively pick the right ones to interview.
That's good.
There's still a little bit of work done there.
Louise wasn't there to hire you. She didn't, she wasn't there for your su-, hiring.
She's been in the district for twenty-seven years.
She's amazing. We're just very fortunate to have her. That's, that's all I can say. Yeah.
Yeah, she's done quite a few.
And she even stepped into the fire as a principal for a period of time.
She did for a year. And she stepped out of the fire very quickly.
She did. But she gave her a lot. She did.
Does anybody else have any information to share with the group while we're on reports, other than Bormo Bontin?
Superintendent, sir, we, last Thursday, we worked on some interview questions. Doing some more this Thursday. Some more work on that, who's going to ask what and stuff. And then we're interviewing people February first, second, and fourth.
The prelim ones? Not the school committee ones, the?
The search committee.
The search committee, okay.
I'm sorry, Carl, the first, second, and?
And fourth.
And fourth.
Okay. So you already have applicants?
I understand there are applicants. We haven't seen your resumes yet.
The way the process works is that the consultant, the, the, the applications get mailed to the consultant. The consultant will be doing an initial screening to make sure that the person is who they say they are and that the qualification, qualifications check out. And then they'll be, she'll be forwarding them to the search committee. So she said, and it's okay, and it's, she, there's five already that she's going to be forwarding. And the applications still have a couple of weeks to come in, and she expects more to come in.
I think it's Friday.
It closes Friday.
Yeah, Friday, but the last day is traditional.
In this last week.
You get a lot, whatever, so.
An influx.
Influx.
Yes.
You know what we're doing with our applications is we're reviewing them absent of name, gender, and age, which I thought was really great.
Louise has told me that, yeah, you were going to do a blind screen. Yeah.
And there is science. I mean, I've seen some of the studies about that, 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 in particular, there's a bias in white males in, in, or at least treating in the interview, white males more favorably than any others. And there, there's all kinds of little biases like that, but that's one in particular. I just try to be aware of my biases. Not give in to them.
Good luck.
Not give in to them entirely, all the time.
Thanks, Carl. Anybody else?
There's a book called Microaggressions.
Nope.
You taught you all of them.
Okay. Judy, you're up.
Okay.
Share.
I don't really, I, I can go quickly through this because we met recently.
It does feel like we just met, doesn't it?
It does. So the building and grounds, Matt Orwell, who's an I A in Wings, he's agreed to help Bruce with snow removal. Bruce is still, still has a walking cast on, on one foot, which makes it a little bit difficult for him, so Matt's giving him a hand.
Are we compensating Matt for that?
We're paying him.
Good.
We're looking at the lighting in the lower hallway. Seems a little, sorry, a little dim. And Bob and Bruce are looking into possibility of replacing the current lights with LEDs. I don't know more than that. I think it's just starting, but it's a little dark there. The school council met and decided that they were going to revise, revise the student handbook this year. We're going to sort of divvy it up and try to bring all of the information up to speed. We'd like it to be ready in May for the kindergarten visitation day. I think it will be. And Amelia Leonardo, who's has a first grader, has joined the school council. We're happy to have her. We had a lockdown. We had a lockdown, um, I think, I think it was the Friday before, we, we broke for vacation, so we, we could, we can sort of imagine what it was like. But actually, the, the teachers and the kids did very well. Jim came to a staff meeting and made some recommendations about, um, emphasizing that students should be in a, should not be in a crouched position. But should be sort of ready to, to run out. And that teacher should stand closer to the door, um, with some kind of something in their hand. I, I will make no comment on that.
Should we get some baseball bats?
We did have three doors, uh, that were not closing properly or efficiently, we have had all, each of those repaired. And Jim, Jim and Ken have been really very helpful with getting our process more refined, better and better. January seventh, that's wrong, it should be January.
January, I'm sorry, it's this Thursday, whatever Thursday is.
The eleventh?
Eleven.
Today's the eleventh, you're right.
Today's the eleventh.
Fourteenth.
Sometime this week, the, um, band strings and chorus are going to do their annual winter concert. Begins at ten, it's in the gym. I always like to use this as a, uh, sort of a, a time to plug what great work those music teachers do. They have children for a very limited amount of time. And if you, um, come on Thursday, you'll be amazed at what they can do with, with those kids.
And you've got new teachers as well this year, right?
We have two new ones, yes, they're wonderful, they're good. They, the, they, uh, sent out personal invitations to parents, the children teachers.
Very nice.
To come on Thursday. The building-based activity for early release Fridays in January and February, because a lot of those are going to be in our own building, uh, and we're happy about that. Teachers are reading a close look at, close reading, um, it's sort of a, a, a way to help teachers to understand how to analyze text with, uh, with children. Sort of go beyond just a superficial understanding or comprehension, but to really get into what is the author doing. Well, it's a well-written book, every teacher has a copy. We met, uh, last Friday to sort of begin the discussion, how are we going to go about doing it? This is something that teachers have wanted to do for a very long time. And in my, in my opinion, the early release Fridays really gives teachers an opportunity to do that. Read something about instruction that they're all interested in doing, and get together and discuss it. And make actual practical plans about how to implement it, so.
Can I just ask?
If I had one bias in favor of the early release days, it, it would be that they make this happen. You could, you could hardly do this before school or after school. And it's something should be done.
How does that look like when that's happening? Is there an outside person that comes in sometime, is, is it self-directed? Who's, who's in the lead in the room doing that? Who, how does that all take place?
No outside person is coming. Paulette, who is our reading specialist, and my reading specialist and myself, are doing it, we're sort of coming back to you. And then at some point, I think the discussion will just become generic to the group.
Does it look different, Judy, at the, at the lower reading levels than at the higher reading levels? Uh, like, does it look different at the fifth and sixth grade than like the K through three, or?
It does, it does look different, um, and I think all of us, we were looking at it last Friday, we're amazed to see how you could do a version of this with kindergarteners and picture books. How you could.
Wow.
How you could help them just sort of look at an exclamation point and then have a discussion about, well, what do you, why do you think the author put that there?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, one of the things we've seen in the district, it's been kind of fascinating process, is all of these leaders that we didn't know that we had within the buildings, rising to the occasion, saying, I really would like to do this. And putting something together and offering it and doing it. That, that has been, I don't know if it was a surprise, but an unexpected pleasure to see that. And we have seen it district-wide, like Paulette and others.
Unintended consequences.
Unintended consequence, yeah.
It only takes place with the kind of leadership that's willing to nurture those teachers, so good job.
Well, and people who can step back and, and take the spotlight off themselves and say, yeah, yeah, right.
And sort of, and, and acknowledgement and a respect for, this is what teachers are asking for, for these Fridays, give us a way. Or answer those requests, and finally. Great, just to remind you that we work with Ed Hubumpis as a storyteller and writing teacher, sort of with a grant a few years back. And he has continued to call various teachers and ask if he can, you know, do a, a week's unit or three days on African folktales. And so he is still a presence in our school, and we're delighted with that, he's, he's really wonderful. So he's teaching writing, and also, it's, it's a, a great opportunity for our kids to hear and see some cultural diversity. So we're happy about that. Kindergarten is close to finishing their, their food pantry collection, um, they're collecting peanut butter and tuna fish. Graphing the results, peanut butter's winning, and, um, sort of, a little anecdote, one of the kindergarteners brought in a jar of peanut, peanut butter and gave it to Jeremy and said, it's not even open.
It's special.
Because you know, he probably wanted to stick his finger in it the entire way to school.
That's what we're doing.
Thank you, Judy. That's great.
So the first thing I want you to do is circle the very last little paragraph and put big lines through it. It is totally false, um, because this was on Deerfield's report. And I, now I'm feeling terrible because I didn't get a chance to go over this with Whately, and it was also on their report. So if they go home and look at this, they're gonna have apoplexy because they're gonna go, oh my god, we're expecting that. So I will have to correct that with them.
I didn't think we had a population vote.
No, no, you did not, so, so get rid of that. And I've, I've spoken to this, um, a little bit already, but we are in the middle of contract negotiations. Um, we started October twenty-first. We try to meet three times a month, and I do wanna publicly thank, you know, from your committee, Phil. Phil and I are spending a lot of time together. We started this afternoon at, I don't know, three o'clock, I started, um, for contract negotiations, so it's a long process, but I really appreciate everyone continuing to show up. Um, and lucky us, our district was selected by the Department of Ed for an accountability review.
They just wanted to let you go out in style, you two.
Yes, you know, all districts in the state do participate, and this year it is our turn. And in order to prepare for this, this project, we had to complete a district self-assessment. And it included that we had to do, um, a response to a hundred and forty-two standards and elements, and we uploaded all the supporting documentation. And we had two hundred and fifty pages that we submitted, and.
You couldn't say, can you do this next year?
You know what I did, and it didn't go over quite well. But I did write to Desi, and I said, well, we, we had a private, um, firm come in and do our special ed audit last year. I would just like to submit that to you and save you all some time in trouble. Didn't fly, but I tried, anyway, they're gonna be here for four days.
That was a good idea, though.
I know, I thought it was. I said, why should you waste your time and money coming up, here it is.
Because look at us, we're hard.
So they're gonna be here for four days in March, and honest to god, I don't know what they're gonna want, so we'll find out. Um, and online surveys have been distributed to parents. The results are due by the eighteenth, we thus far have got.
Can I ask you about that, though?
Sure, I don't think I got one.
Of all of the things about last year's, uh, the, 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 the way that the, the, the calendar was adopted and all that, and the, the, the one thing that, um, got to me, that, you know, ha- having parent, a parent from this town actually write the letter to the, to the editor, um, which, which was sad.
Yeah.
Um, but the one thing that, that wa- was prin- was the primary concern of that letter and a bunch of what other people have said is, why couldn't you have stuck something in our lu- in our kids' lunch ba- in, in our kids' bag?
It never makes it home.
But that, 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 that was just the one thing, and, and it, it's not too, re- really too much of an effort to just make a bunch of photocopies, stick them in every kid's bag once. Just the online survey, stick it in their bag before the eighteenth, and just at least cross that one complaint off the list.
Kill all the trees, go right ahead, Phil.
No, no, come on.
Kill trees, how many parents and how many, whatever.
Already.
That was one complaint, though, and that.
I would agree.
That, 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 you know, that, that, it wasn't, it wasn't the only complaint.
It never makes it home.
There, there was multiple.
It might reach five people, but they might have the biggest complaints.
There was multiple people that said that.
And then you could say, we did that.
There was multiple people that said that, online, you're not really serious if you didn't put it in our kids' line, I didn't get it online, da-da-da, give it to. I heard that from so many people, and that was.
Why don't you have them available in the schools, then?
You could have some printed and available in the schools, um.
But don't, if you do it online.
But then you won't be able to calculate it, this way we can disaggregate all the data. I mean, that's the advantage of doing it this way.
You have to do it by hand.
You would have to do it by hand.
Yeah, or you have a lot.
Because we're, we're looking at.
For the few that you get back handwritten, you have a data entry person.
Is it the filling out the survey by hand, or is it not knowing about it? In paper?
That people complained about, it was not knowing.
Yeah, it was not knowing, that, that there are just, that there's a substantial number of people that just don't do the headline, that don't do the o- online much of anything.
Email even.
And that if they do do it, they don't do it in this, in their kid's schooling.
So you're saying that they would do the survey online, we just need to notify them manually? For lack of a better word.
Kind of, yeah.
I mean, yeah, that, that's, that's a polite way of saying it. A less polite way of saying is that there's a bunch of squeaky wheels that you can really quiet down with just making a few photocopies and sending them home with the kids, that's all, that's.
Is it posted on each elem- each school's website?
Yeah, and on the district website, yeah.
But they're saying they don't do that, they don't surf the web, they don't.
They don't go looking for it, a lot of people don't, probably most people don't.
Then I would say, come into the current.
I mean, we could do it, but the downside of it is, we've already received all many, almost four hundred. I don't know if we get duplicates from people who have already taken it online.
How about a robo-call?
Oh, I did a robo-call to, to let them know about the survey.
They don't enter their phone.
A robo-call is helpful. I, I would be satisfied with that.
Maybe a robo-call to inform the parents that it is available online until next Monday, and if they do not access online, paper copies will be in the office, how about that, Judy?
I love that idea.
Okay, but.
That's good, that's good.
But it has to go to, to everyone, not just Conway, right? Aren't we talking about, are we talking about early release?
Yeah.
So that affects all five schools, so.
Nobody else complains.
It was Whately that complained.
No, the person who wrote that.
At the Frontier calendar meeting, last time, it was mostly Frontier, uh, Conway parents.
It was Conway parents.
And they all went away, uh, unhappy.
And in fairness to Conway families, not everybody has, has internet access up there.
Right.
It is very different down on the mainland or the flatland.
That's where we are right now.
No, but the flatlands, so, so I could.
What do you call it?
I don't know.
We call it the flatland.
Why can't you make a district robo-call?
No, that's a, what you said was, is good, is a good workaround, and I think.
Yeah, I think that will work for, certainly for Conway.
Then what about when you get the Whately parent that says, I never heard, well, Conway got a robo-call?
Let me talk to Sarah, could she put together, I don't wanna, I don't want to upset the statistical analysis of this. So let me talk to Sarah in the morning first, okay? But I understand what you're saying, Phil, I will also tell you.
And it is true about internet access in Conway, some people.
I also found that when I did snow calls, when I was a principal in Frontier, we had it on the radio, we had it on the TV, I did a robo-call. There was a certain percentage of people that if I didn't go personally knock on their doors and tell them that school was canceled, I was not going to please. And so I also accept that there are a percentage of people out there that I will never please.
Very healthy attitude.
Cannot be pleased. So while I try to serve everyone in the best way, there are some people that I'm just, you know, I had one woman who said, well, I don't read the newspaper, I don't have internet, I don't.
It's like I always say, I could give everybody in the world a hundred dollars and people would still complain that I gave it to them at a hundred and not five twenties.
She lives in Never Never Land.
So, but it's a good question to ask, and if it won't destroy the statistical stuff, yes, because I do wanna get as much information as possible so that we can distribute it on the twenty-eighth.
I'll wait to hear from you, yes.
Where do I find the online survey, because I actually didn't get the.
See, see?
If you go to the district website, or you could go to Judy and she'll have the paper copy.
I am internet capable.
Go to the website.
Go to the website, yeah.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, Dr.?
Thank you.